Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started in a moment. We're just waiting for folks to put their masks on, please. All right, we're going to head and as a reminder, please, we're on school property. And the health and safety plan at this time does require masks be worn. My name is Susan Henderson-Utis. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And ask that if you're able to do so, to go ahead and rise at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Again, as a reminder, we're on school property. The health and safety plan at this time does require you to put your mask on. Or security will ask you to depart. Dr. Scott, if you would go ahead and take attendance.
Ken Dennett. Hillary Fletcher.
Here.
Jackie Guusik.
Yeah.
Shelley Hunt.
Here.
Robert Kelly.
Here.
Susan Lane.
Here.
Kelly Schaefer.
Yeah.
Ava Finnegan.
Here.
Kenzie Grant.
Yeah.
Nielsen. Teresa Napson-Williams.
Yeah.
Susan Henderson-Utis.
Here.
Madam President, we have
Thank you. The teacher in me says attendance. I meant roll call. Thank you very much, Dr. Scott. All right, first up, we have approval of the minutes. I'm going to go ahead and suggest we group A and B together in one motion. Is there any objection to my doing so? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion?
Summer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we do not at this time have any presentations and awards or educational presentations. We're going to go now and move on to the student liaison reports.
Hi, I'm Ava Finnegan. I will be reporting about Glenwood Elementary School and Indian Lane Elementary School. At Glenwood, Mr. O'Neill visited the kindergarten classrooms to help students make connection between a real toolbox and their reading toolbox, in which each of the reading strategies represent a real tool. The students enjoyed wearing their construction gear and sharpening their reading skills. Students participated in our own version of the Winter Olympics, complete with opening and closing ceremonies. Each class represented a different country to compete in various academic competitions. Students in kindergarten through second grade created a maze for their ice skaters after learning the properties of magnetism. The students in third through fifth grades learned about potential and kinetic energy and designed a downhill skier to race down a wooden ski slope. Glenwood's families sent hundreds of items for the Super Bowl of caring. Ms. Bruno's fifth grade class organized and sorted donations. Then the Pencrest Boys Lacrosse Team loaded the items on a school bus to drop them off at the Media Food Bank. And to celebrate Black History Month, the Glenwood Equity Team and teachers shared numerous resources, including classroom read alouds, biography lessons, and a Black History Month display hung in the main hallway. On February 15th, the company Music Muso Musicopia, West African drum and dance performed at an all-school virtual assembly. And over in Indian Lane Elementary School, Student Council organized the Polar Pop, which is a safe at-home alternative to plunging into icy cold waters. To support the Special Olympics, participants popped a coal water balloon over their head and then challenged others to do the same. The goal was to raise 4,500 in order to provide inclusive sports, health, and school programs for nearly 20,000 individuals with intellectual disabilities. Throughout February, Indian Lane has been celebrating Black History Month. In music, each class began with a highlighted artist such as Stevie Wonder, Phil Withers, and Lionel Richie. In reading, second and third graders read from Jamia Wilson's Young, Gifted, and Black and wrote letters to their heroes in the book. Wilson's Young. Wilson's, wait, sorry. Fifth graders watched a video about the heroes of the civil rights movement. Then they created pass-it-on billboards by researching a black individual who has made history. Also, students created collaborative art for the hallways which feature prominent African-Americans. Then students created keynote presentations showcasing what they learned.
Hi, I'm Kenzie Grant. I'll be reading the reports from Media Elementary School and Roche elementary school. At Media Elementary School, to celebrate Black History Month and the many cultures that make up the Media Elementary School community, the school held two important events in the month of February. First, a poster contest, which featured which focused on the accomplishments of African-American innovators in the fields of science, technology, mathematics, and design was held. Then Media hosted a Cultural Heritage Day when students grabbed their passports and traveled to places like Germany, Ghana, South Korea, Trinidad, and Tobago. Last week, Media kindergarten and first grade students celebrated the first 100 days of learning by participating in a parade, counting collections, dressing like a 100-year-old person, and accessorizing their outfits. Intermediate students engaged in math activities related to 100. Thank you to the PTG for making our in-person book fair possible. All students visited the book fair and families were able to visit the fair on two different evenings. Ms. Marie Costa, a learning support teacher, has been named a recipient of the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union Excellence in Teaching Award. Along with 19 other educators across the tri-county area, she will be recognized and celebrated at a banquet on April 21st. At Roche elementary, fifth grade students celebrated Black History Month by participating in an interactive lesson about the living conditions of a Revolutionary War soldier. The role of Edward "Ned" Hector, a soldier in the Revolutionary War, was played by Noah Lewis. Roche elementary students celebrated the 100th day of school by participating in various counting activities, writing about life in 100 years, doing 100 exercises, and reading a book called 100 Days' Worries. The Roche community donated items ranging from food to cleaning supplies to the Providence Animal Shelter, which offers rescue, medical care, treatment, protection, and placement of animals. Thank you to Mrs. Chris McGuire for organizing the Strive. Students at Roche elementary collectively earned over 2,000 high-five tickets, so they enjoyed a positive behavior celebration during lunch with two very energetic DJs. Thank you, Mrs. Morris and Mrs. Shriver.
At Springton, hi, my name's Nielsen and I'll be covering Springton Lake and Pencrest High School. At Springton Lake, we were able to successfully continue a large-scale service project that had been split over two days in celebration of the MLK Day of Service. Students packaged over 1,500 breakfast bags, made over 1,500 sandwiches, packaged about 400 snack and toiletry bags, and prepared over 700 frozen meals for the home bound. Also, 125 paracord bracelets were made for Operation Gratitude. A project of this magnitude would not have been possible without the support of PTG, Student Council, and our families. Springton Lake has been celebrating Black History Month. In physical education, students learned about individuals who have made contributions to athletics, fitness, health, and wellness, then participated in activities in which these pioneers excel. Music Lab students explored the contributions and legacies of black DJs who helped to shape the sound of hip-hop. Also, eighth-grade language arts students focused upon the shared themes of responsibility, change, inclusion, and hope in 2021, in the 2021 inaugural poem, "The Hill We Climb" by Amanda Gorman, and Maya Angelou's 1993 inaugural poem, "On the Pulse of Morning." The finals of the Springton Lake Springton Lake Schoolwide Spelling Bee took place on February 16th. Seventh grader, uh, student, seventh-grade student April Kim emerged as the winner, and eighth-grade student Nicholas Assalone was runner-up. They will now represent Springton Lake in this county-wide spelling bee hosted by DCIU. The winter sports season concluded earlier this month with all of our teams having very successful seasons. School spirit was palpable at our games. Some students even coordinated a white-out among the student body for a basketball game to show their support. Over at Pencrest High School, the high Q team finished the regular season third in the county, which allowed us to host a home playoff match. We played well against Strathhaven and Marple, but Marple came out on top. At the second, at the end of the second marking period, nearly 55% of all Penncrest students made the honor roll, including 58% of our freshmen. Our counselors worked with the class of 2022 to submit over 2,100 college applications this year, which is 150 more than last year. Penn State, Pitt, and Temple were the most popular choices among the senior year's class. They also submitted 86 applications to Ivy League schools this year. Thanks to the school counselors, who submitted an average of 500 applications each. Our Chinese teacher, Mrs. Lynn, and her students performed line dances during lunch periods on Tuesday, February 15th, to bring auspicious chi to the PHS. Additionally, students decorated the building with symbols of Chinese culture to celebrate the Lunar New Year. Lastly, the Simon Youth Academy and the Technology Department would like to highlight Edwin Craig, a senior in the Roche Media Simon Youth Academy in Pencrest High School. He is working towards graduate graduation this spring while continuing to build his tech skills. Edwin participates in the Delaware County Technical Schools Computer Networking and Digital Forensics Program. In addition, his independent study with technology assistant KB Cannon is giving him a glimpse into the professional world of informational technology. Because of his previous computer-related knowledge and problem-solving skills, the Technology Department is benefiting from Edwin's independent study as much as he is. He repairs Chromebooks, works on projectors and printers, and troubleshoots other tech issues.
Wow, as always, I am blown away by everything that our students do and the staff and faculty. Especially by the last one with Chromebook repairs, that is a valuable skill set right there. Thank you so very much for sharing. All right, we're going to move on to our board liaison reports. I know, Michelle Hunt, you're on virtual. Do you have a report for DCCC?
I'm so sorry, I was unmuted. I do have a report, as long as you can hear me, I am happy to share it. We got a lot of updates from DCCC the past couple of weeks, including the enrollment report, which is 4,540 students from the supporting districts, including 203 dual-enrolled students from the sponsoring districts. There is an update for the new campus. As many of you know, Delaware County Community College did purchase the former Archbishop Prendergast High School building, and they were recently awarded a $2.5 million grant from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, which is from the state of Pennsylvania, and that is the first step for them to begin to transform the former high school into a quality educational and training center, as well as community programs for students and residents of the local area. There's also a new marketing campaign that they're coming out with, and you'll be seeing it all over digital media, television, direct mail, public transit, et cetera. It's called Change Starts Here. It was developed with the input of students, faculty, and staff, and reflects what the college has become, which is very forward-focused and student-ready. So be looking for that as you drive around the area. The strategic plan extension concludes in 2022, and they've had their middle states visit. They're going to use that assessment as the starting point for their next strategic plan. They had a town hall for faculty and staff in January, and they're going to be reaching out to many members of the community to get external input from students and community members as they move forward in their long-term strategic plan. As for the spring of 2020, too, remember that their health and safety guidelines do require masks in all indoor facilities. And as a precaution, they are currently still not holding any large in-person events at this time. If something changes, they will make sure to let the public know. I think one thing I want to spend a moment on is Moonshot for Equity. I presented this at a previous meeting where the Moonshot for Equity is a national program, and West Chester University and Delaware County Community College were two of the first local area, actually, the entire east coast area, they were the first two to sign on for the program. And in many cases, a lot of equity programs have focused on correcting deficits in education or experience, and the Moonshot for Equity is very focused on removing the barriers that create a lot of those deficits. They're focused on adult learners and students who have historically not had the same access to education. They have had the initial assessment of where DCCC stands and West Chester University, and they're going to put together their implementation plan. If you recall, a students in need who do well at Delaware County Community College in this program will automatically be able to transfer over to West Chester University, complete a four-year degree, and students with financial need will be given housing assistance, et cetera. So stay tuned, it's a really interesting program. And the exhibit of the dockets for enslaved people of Delaware County remains on exhibit through the end of the month. These are very historical documents that the Delaware County Bar Association became the custodian of, and they are on display at the Community College, where students, staff, and visitors are able to reflect on the experience and what that means for us currently in the present. And that is it for Delaware County Community College. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hunt, for keeping us surprised with everything going on with our tremendous community partner, Delaware County Community College. Much appreciated. All right, Ms. Fletcher, do you have a report to share for DCIU and Legislative Council?
I do. I have a few things. I'll try to get through them quickly. Um, so last month, Representative Cerise of Montgomery County held a news conference on charter school accountability reform, highlighting the results of an examination of records showing that charter schools have spent more than $35 million in tax dollars just on advertising during the previous two school years, with no state audits or oversight. Also, last month, Governor Wolf signed into law Senate Bill 324, which is now Act One of 2022, which is intended to help keep students experiencing homelessness or in foster care on track to graduate high school. This is a great, uh, this is a great act now. I believe it is another unfunded mandate. Both of these things, cyber charter funding reform and unfunded mandates, I was able to discuss with Representative Chris Quinn, with whom I met yesterday morning. Governor Wolf, as many of us know, did approve $1.25 billion to be added to the basic education funding formula and a $300 million investment into Level Up, which concerns the 100 districts that are most in need of help. While we are not one of those districts, I like to report on that because what happens to children all over our state should matter to us. There's also special education funding of $200 million, one of the largest increases ever for special education. There's a last piece of legislative news. There's a proposal on the table that would address savings for public schools by way of charter funding. One of the proposals involves a possible flat rate for cyber charter tuition. In the IU, um, in January, the DCIU Board approved a policy making vaccination a requirement for employment at the IU, and this follows the federal requirement for all Head Start employees. DCIU sponsors something called Project Elect, which is a program providing comprehensive support services to school-age pregnant students and parenting students throughout Delaware County. Project Elect received an increased number of program referrals at the start of 21, uh, the 21-22 school year as students return to in-person learning. And the program to date has served 71 students and is on track to serve about 92 students. Also, the DCIU Spelling Bee and Reading Olympics, or DCIU will host the Spelling Bee and Reading Olympics competitions this year. And also, I'm happy to report this, Skills USA District Two Regional Competition winners. I sent this to you in an email, but I want to tell everybody. Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry representatives working together to ensure that the United States has a skilled workforce. Students in various programs at the Technical School participated in Skills USA District Two Regional Competitions. And we, Pencrest, have a couple of winners. There was a first-place award for first aid and CPR that went to Lucas Sampson, Emergency and Protective Services, and a third-place award in carpentry that went to Jack Gomer Carp, for carpentry. So congratulations to them. And we also have a National Technical Honor Society inductee for 2022, Simi Lulu Ah, Ola Navy, for medical careers. And lastly, news from PSBA. The U.S. Department of Education recently released updates to the College Scorecard, and you can find that at college scorecard.edu.gov. And they released enhancements that make the tools more useful for students and families weighing college options. But if you're a student and continuing your education in a traditional classroom right now is not the right option for you, there's a whole section for alternatives to a four-year degree like apprenticeships and training programs.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fletcher, and all the best of all the incredible things going on with DCIU. That is fabulous. All right, moving on then, it's time for our superintendent's report.
The month of February rang in the Lunar New Year and marks the first month of the Chinese calendar. Celebrations and festivities take place for 15 days, beginning on February 1st and culminating in a lantern festival on February 15th. This is the year of the tiger. The tiger symbolizes strength, exercising evils, and bravery, something I believe we can all relate to as we continue to face the challenge of the pandemic. Tonight, the board will once again consider revision to the Health and Safety Plan around masking requirements. I understand that passions and opinions run deep regarding masking and that this is a very divisive topic across all communities, including our own. However, I am troubled to hear that some of our students who spoke last month were harassed by the adults who were in attendance. This is completely unacceptable and will not be tolerated. This is not who we are as a community. Our students have an equal right to express their opinions, and they have done so respectfully, modeling the epitome of civil discourse that is a cornerstone of our democracy. I am proud of them, regardless of where they stand on the issue of masking. Let's continue to remember that well after the end of this pandemic, we need to be a community whose actions represent our shared values of kindness, compassion, and respect, as well as to understand that our common humanity is what connects us, both in times of struggle, as well as in times of joy.
Thank you very much, Dr. DiMarino Lennon. And next up, Mr. Kelly with your solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. You have my written report, and I'm pleased to say that I've received no more commercial residential tax assessment deals from property owners in the school district. And so, if my memory serves me correctly, we have a total of only eight commercial tax deals. I think it's four or five residential, which is amazing. Lowest numbers as far back as I can remember. The other thing I'd like to report on the Indian Lane Parking Lot Project, last week, the Development, Security, and Stormwater Management agreements executed by the township were delivered to a middle township along with a letter of credit. So that project is starting, in fact, there's an agenda item tonight to approve the contract for that project. So everything's in line for that project to move along. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Then moving on to my president's report, I wanted just to pay special recognition to a few students in our that have gone, going on to do great things this weekend. We have Ruby Schwelm and Jonathan Huul, who will be going into the district swim championships this weekend. We've got our varsity wrestling team that is going into the district wrestling championships this weekend. And we have both the girls and boys indoor track teams that are going to be going to the state championships this weekend. Incredible. Whatever happens this weekend, we are also very, very proud of our students. On a same note, I do also want to say on behalf of the board that we're as Dr. DiMarino Lennon said, however individuals vote, we are all of us community and tremendously proud of our community. And the right to engage in civic discourse, it's a very real and important thing. And I also want to pay special tribute to our students who are here and sacrifice their evenings to come here and occasionally even to, you know, speak on the different issues beyond their school reports. And we support you and we thank you for doing your civic duty on this, and we appreciate you all very much. So thank you. All right, we're going to be moving on to presentations. I just want to do a couple reminders. One, if you are here and you would like to give an unscheduled presentation, we do have some signup sheets in the back, and you are welcome and encouraged to sign up so that we can call on you when the time is right. And two, we'll be doing the scheduled presentations first. And I just, given that we have a couple of scheduled presentations in addition to, no doubt, some unscheduled ones, I'm going to go ahead and read my little disclaimer now as a reminder. So, district residents and taxpayers wishing to address the school board are encouraged to do so at this time. Written items are strongly suggested. Speakers should state their name and their municipality for the record before commenting. Comments are going to be limited to five minutes for scheduled presentations, three minutes for unscheduled presentations. The school board may suspend the public comment period after a reasonable amount of time, and the use of profanity, shouting, or personal attacks are discouraged. Please also note that the public comment period is intended to provide an opportunity for citizens to address the board. However, it is not an opportunity to participate in public debate or a question-and-answer dialogue. And that is why contact information should be provided to the administration and board so that the district can follow up with citizens' concerns following this meeting. So, with all of that said, we'll go ahead and start with our scheduled presentations. We have first up, Ms. Jeanette Verdur with RTMEA.
Good evening, members of the school board. It's great to be here tonight. The Rose Tree Media Education Association, along with our ESP and Secretaries Unit, is excited to let you know that you and the greater school community know that we had a very successful conclusion to our supply drive held to benefit teachers' teammates. This all-volunteer organization runs a warehouse in Fallcroft, where they collect and redistribute a myriad of items that are used by students and teachers every day. The organization is currently serving any Delaware County teacher actively working in a 65% threshold Title I school. For a nominal membership fee, a teacher may shop twice a year via their online store. The order is then pulled and processed, and they just drive to the warehouse and pick it up. Most orders are valued in the $700 range. This is a tremendous help to beginning teachers who purchase many classroom items with their own money and also benefits the students in under-resourced schools. As members of PSEA, the Pennsylvania State Educators Association, we hope that our state and federal elected officials would understand the everlasting value in fully funding public education. But until that time, RTMEA is honored to support such organizations as teachers' teammates. On February 12th, in celebration of our 100th day of school, our ESPs delivered over a dozen large, very large boxes, because I had to carry them, of needed school supplies, and the teachers' union collected over a dozen backpacks and monetary donations totaling $1,530. We are RTMEA proud. Thank you.
That is tremendous news. Our next scheduled speaker is Robin Matthews.
I apologize in advance because I do have a cold. I promise it's not COVID. I've been tested. Uh, my name's Robin Matthews. I'm an RTMSD parent. I live in Media Borough. Trying to find where the glasses sweet spot is of that age. Before I begin, I'd like to first express my appreciation for the work the board and administration has done over the course of the COVID pandemic in order to keep our kids and our community safe, while meeting the very real demands of teacher shortage and a very opinionated while meeting the very real demands of teacher shortage and a very opinionated community. I would also like to take this opportunity to comment that regarding masking, I believe it is smartest at this time to keep the current mitigation strategy in place until we are in moderate transmission or until the CDC revises their guidance. That said, right? I mean, case in point. That said, the main reason for speaking, my main reason for speaking tonight in regards is in regards to the district's policy of restorative practice as a method of addressing racial, cultural, and ethnic microaggressions, as well as the policy's transparency and adherence. Over the eight years that my child has been a student in the district, I've heard several stories relating to diversity, race, and equity that have troubled me. There have been incidents where students have mistreated other students, incidents where staff have been victims of microaggressions and outright racism from colleagues. And most recently, the incident where a student of color was called out in front of the class and made to remove a cultural item of clothing. Frankly, while all of these examples are in themselves problematic, my concern is actually the follow-up and response, both at the micro and the macro level. I asked a question via email about anti-bias training and received a thoughtful response from Dr. Di Marino Lennon. Thank you for that regarding policies and trainings. And I feel encouraged by what was outlined there, among them a discussion of the restorative practice model of conflict resolution. This model calls for restorative circles, conflict resolution, and peer mediation. However, for the restorative practice model to be effective, it must also include transparency in policies and procedures and explicit direct sanctions as backup if the restorative process fails. In Dr. Di Marino Lennon's email to me, the explanation of RTMSD's restorative practice policy was vague and did not include any information about where I could read about it in more detail. I also did not see an explanation of direct sanctions as backup if the process fails. I know that when the restorative practice model is fueled by a vocal parent, as it has been in some of the cases mentioned above, it often sees some follow-through. But I don't know what happens to those students and staff who don't have vocal advocates. I have heard firsthand accounts of incidents that did not receive adequate follow-through as a matter of course. I'm hoping that this policy exists in writing and that I can be helpful in finding a better way to make this information more easily accessible. But as it stands now, I, as a parent in the district, do not know what, for example, a teacher who causes harm due to cultural ignorance is expected to do in order to repair the damage done. And then if that is not carried out to satisfaction, what the direct sanction is. In fact, as I understand it, most teachers in the district do not know this explicit policy, let alone students. I believe that it is this lack of clarity that has gotten us to a place where there are few, if any, actual consequences for damaging behavior unless the issue is forced by a vocal parent or ally. I also know that many incidents go unreported because of the lack of a clearly communicated and prudent strategy of harm reduction and repair. My aim in addressing the board and administrate them publicly today is twofold. One, to get actual information. Where are these policies published? How can I and other members of the district access them? And two, to draw attention to what I see as a critical gaping hole in our district's repeated response, or often lack thereof, to cultural and racial aggression and microaggression from faculty, staff, and students. And I look forward to a stronger commitment to transparency and follow-through at every level of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're getting ready to move on to unscheduled presentations. As a reminder, for anyone who would like to go ahead and speak before the board, you're certainly encouraged to do so. We do have another sign up sheet in the back. So I'm going to go ahead. We also, you might have noticed, in response to making things a little bit easier for people to speak before the board, we have two podiums. So hopefully that will make people more comfortable when coming to speak. And last but not least, again, our health and safety plan at this time does require masked usage while on campus, so please put your mask on. I do apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. That is never my intent. And of course, we are, have three minutes per individual. Our first person is Sydney Whitman.
Hi, I'm Sydney Whitman. I'm here regarding something that actually our last speaker mentioned about a student who was asked to remove her culture head covering, and I would like to say that student was me. On the week of January 17th, at Springton Lake, a rule was enforced. Sorry. A rule was enforced. It's, it's, we're no longer allowed to wear, um, okay, head coverings. They were no longer allowed to wear head covering such as caps and hoods. I was told on January 26th to remove what I was wearing on my head and perceive what seems to be a bandana to many is a significant part of my West Indian culture. I was targeted twice by the same teacher to remove my head covering. I was embarrassed. I felt ashamed, and I was laughed at by students walking in front of, publicly in front of the teacher. Also, in spite of me telling the assistant principal that the head covering is a part of my culture, I was still asked to remove it. Something we addressed at the beginning of the school year was that no one should be made of, fun of for their religion, ethnicity, culture, or origin without there being any consequences. So why did my school principal and my own superintendent violate that rule? The same people who made the rule are the same people who broke it. If a student was responsible for treating me like this, they would be in a lot of trouble. So why isn't this, why isn't the staff in trouble as they were the ones responsible for the incident? Discipline should not only be for students, but also for principals, teachers, and all other staff members. I have one question for Dr. Di Marino Lennon. I read your email that you sent to my parents. It hurt me to see how you hid part of this incident, how you could cut, how you could protect yourself and staff while you were in the wrong. Where is my protection? I am the victim. Me removing my head covering when told to was not a lie. I did take it off, despite I should not have. Informing Dr. Layton that hair, my head covering was a part of my culture was not a lie. I did it in front of other students. Why would I make something like this up? Do you know how horrible that day was for me and how alone and embarrassed I felt? Did you know that that's still hard to me to this day? Thinking about it makes me like this. My parents sent me to school where they thought I would feel safe and understood, but I most definitely didn't. I felt alone, uncared for, and stripped from my cultural beliefs. That day, it felt like someone was telling me to disregard my culture. You said it was for the safety of others, yet I don't see how this on my head is affecting anyone in this room right now or at my school, in my classroom. It is hard to believe that in your position, rather than do what is right and condemn the actions of those involved and yourself, you chose to point fingers at a 13-year-old girl and her family. On the basis of how the district handled what happened to me in your email, I feel like minorities and people of culture and origin were not allowed, are not allowed to be themselves. And I would like to let, here we go. And I would like to let you know that you did not just insult me and my family's culture, but hundreds upon thousands of other cultures around the world. I promise to be an advocate for students of all cultures and communities, and I will not be allowed, I will not be afraid to speak about this anymore. I will wipe my tears, and my name Sydney Whitman will be remembered.
Thank you, Sydney. It takes a tremendous.
Give me, give me, give it to me, girl. Come here.
Our next speaker is Donalyn Whitman.
Lights. Good evening, everyone. My name is Donalyn Whitman. This is my daughter Sydney Whitman. Like she closed by saying, you will remember her name and you will remember my name, Donalyn Whitman. Today I stand before you, not alone, but I'm here with all my ancestors on this podium who came before me, who fought the battle so that today my voice will be heard. Today I stand before you, not alone, but I stand with minorities, people of different cultures, backgrounds, and origins. Today I stand before you, expressing no apology for the color of my skin, my traditional wear, or my Saint Lucian heritage. We did not choose the color of our skin, neither did you. We did not choose our country of birth, neither did you. We did not choose our language or accents, neither did you. But what you choose, but what you will choose is to provide us and our children with the same respect that is given to all other families. What you will do in this school district is to respect our children regardless of their differences, regardless of the color of their eyes, regardless of the texture of their hair, regardless of the color of their skin, regardless of having two moms or two dads, regardless of their social economic status. You will treat them equal and with respect. What this school district did to my daughter is shameful, and how this incident has, was handled by all parties involved, including the school board, is disheartening. Compromising one's soul, compromising one's integrity, hurting children and their families to be afforded a seat at this table or at any table, to be afforded the titles, the accolades, the salaries, the power will one day end. Believe it or not, these little brown girls and boys and black girls and boys are our future. They will grow and become adults one day, and they will remember that you did not, the what you did and how you made them feel, and that is the price that you will have to pay. When I walk out of this room, I can make you a promise. My heart is clean and my conscience is clear, is yours.
Yeah, it's my name Scott Whitman Media. Obviously, that's my wife and my daughter. I am here to speak in reference to some of the same thoughts that Robin Matthews had. And that is that when I look at the presentations in every one of these schools about how they honored tradition and culture and Black History Month and all the things that went on at all the various schools, to me, it seems like window dressing. Now, I know there's some thoughtful people on this board, but I also know that there's some people on this board that want to stiff-arm many of the parents through bureaucracy or placating them or giving them canned answers like, we know things are very frustrating with the policies or with COVID or whatever it might be. You know, we're not stupid. We're pretty smart people out here too. And for the few people on this board that do that, it's very, very insulting. You know, we have real issues. Your job here is to make sure that our students are well-educated and that their problems are addressed. And when there's not clarity, when there's not transparency, and most of all, when there's not honesty, I've had instances over the last three years to have interactions on a couple of topics regarding this school system. And there hasn't been an honest answer there. There's been answers that have placated my concerns. And for that, that's not why we pay our school taxes. And I felt that your answers, Dr. Marino, were, Di Marino, excuse me, were, were, were not very truthful in those emails that you sent to my wife. I didn't think that there's things that you said in that meeting that you were going to follow up on were done. There was not transparency. There was no level of honesty as far as what was going to happen to the people that were involved in the situation. And the reason you had these people coming up here now and telling you these stories about different problems with race in our schools is because we have window dressing, like there's nice pictures that were on the screen up there, but then we don't have a policy that starts at the top and spreads that policy down evenly. It's just done to make people feel happy about themselves. Geez, we're doing a great job because look at this. Well, that doesn't do anything about racism or make us come together as a community.
Our next speaker is Kelly Yaden.
Ubuntu is an African proverb that means I am because you are. The theme in this statement is I cannot live this life without you. We cannot live this life without each other. This theme is hard to come by, especially in a society that's grown to be incessantly individualistic. Though saddening individualism is to be expected out there in the world, but here in Rose Tree Media School District, Ubuntu should be the central philosophy in how we operate and care for each other. We are a village comprised of parents, guardians, students, administrators, alums, faculty, and staff. If any part of that village is fractured, this community cannot work. If you do not know by now Sydney Whitman, I want you to know she is my daughter. She is your daughter, and she is the daughter of everyone in this room. Therefore, we are all responsible for her well-being. After Sydney was a victim of cultural discrimination in January, after being asked to aggressively remove her head wrap, even with all that, she was an advocate, trying to be an advocate for herself. Her spirit was squelched by a teacher, the part of the village that she trusted. The village failed her again. When calls went unanswered, curt emails were sent, and an unproductive meeting result resulted in a status quo. And here we are again, stuck in the cycle of equity dysfunction. As I watched students present on all they learned about Black History Month, yeah, my spirit lifted a bit. But celebrating Black History Month and citing Lunar New Year facts does not make this a culturally responsive school district. We need that, but we need deep culture. We need anti-racism and anti-bias focus. We need to notice black students walking with their heads low because they are not truly celebrated here. We need to protect the children who are being taunted because their names do not sound familiar to us or transgendered children who are targeted. The fact that your team is stuck in a cycle of equity dysfunction, knowing students are being harmed, is concerning. You all know this part. If you choose to shift your lens and demonstrate true commitment to this work, you will. Sit with a large number of black families to listen to and understand their concerns. Listen to their solutions and then act. Speak with parents of black girls who are embarrassed to go swimming because their hair curls up too tightly. Speak with black parents whose children do not want to be black because it's easier to try to be white. Ask families of color how they've been impacted when the N-word is written on the media elementary school playground, and there is no space to communicate about that. Speak to LGBTQ community members about their experiences. Ask them what they need to feel supported, then implement those supports. Share with your parents your strategic vision around DEI work. Update the website that has been vacant for over a year. Ask for feedback. This is the proactive work, which must supersede reactive work. When harmful situations arise, ensure there is a check and balance system. Can't keep having all these yes people. Name it, own it. You can shift in your chair and have all the attitude you want. Name it, own it, interrupt it, and that's what we will do. Ensure culturally responsive training is ongoing. Reassess growth to ensure people will not harm again. How do you really know that what you're implementing is working? I have two black boys in this district who are in your care. They are smart, loving, hardworking. I want to know that they are safe when they are in your care, and I do not believe they are.
Our next speaker.
I want to know that they will be treated fairly.
And able to achieve because of their hard work.
Rather than continuing to be offended and defensive because I'm speaking up, be a diplomatic leader who understands empathy.
Our next speaker is Michelle Andrews.
To show Sydney that if she is a victim of identity harm again, you will be there to stop it.
Ma'am.
We will, nope. We will be looking.
No, ma'am. It is over. You were here for an unscheduled presentation. Our next speaker is Michelle Andrews.
We need that you can make a necessary change.
Ms. Andrews, are you yielding your time?
Cultural shift the Rose Tree Media School District.
Are you yielding your time, ma'am?
Only then will you be able to lead RTMSD leaders into action. I would like to close with a quote from the book you are reading, Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity. Inclusion is not a strategy to help people fit into the systems and structures which exist in our societies. It is about transforming those systems and structures to make it better for everyone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nashia Andrews. I'm a parent of a middle schooler at Springton Lake. My daughter is an eighth grader along with Sidney Whitman. I've known Sidney and her family for eight years. They are the first family to walk on minds into media when we arrived here from Philadelphia to give our daughter a chance to get a great education at the award-winning Rose Tree Media School District. Anyone who knows Sidney knows her unique style with her signature wild curly hair, often covered with stylish bandana-style haircuts. When I spoke to my friend after hearing the news of Sidney being singled out by a teacher in front of the entire class to remove her bandana, I was furious. Furious with the issue, the way the issue was handled by the administrators, furious with the fact that a child was humiliated for being herself and representing her West Indian culture, and furious that in 2022, this award-winning school district has yet again missed the mark and is still so far, has so far to go when it comes to inclusion and diversity. We can't pick and choose what and when and what we want to be inclusive about and how we choose to show diversity in our schools. It has to be across the board. Two words, do better. To Sidney, Donna, Scott, and Gabby, I love you guys and I stand with you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom McFadden. As a friendly reminder, when people come up and speak, please be sure to say your municipality for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas McFadden. I live in Upper Providence Township and have for 30 years. Currently, I'm township council for the fourth time in Upper Providence, four times. I live directly next to the Springton Lake Middle School. I'm an attorney in media and have resided at the same location for the last nearly 30 years, my law office. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal to light the Major League Ball Field at the Springton Lake Middle School. I do have one exhibit, one page. I'd like to pass it out. Just tell me where does this school start? Thirteen cottons, so over the years ago. This is a document I received from a GIS mapping in Delaware County. It is a schemata or a plot plan of the entire Springton Lake Middle School, which totals somewhere in the vicinity of about 80 acres. It's huge. There are currently three ballfields on the northern end of that campus. And I've marked those there as one, two, and three on the upper right-hand side. You'll see the words or the letters SLMS. That's the school. That's the school at campus. You'll also see in the lower left-hand side, a parcel that has me on it. That's where I live, right next to the school. So at any rate, there's been some expression of concern about neighborhood concerns. I'm here to tell you that I have, I know all of these people. There are a total of 13 properties adjacent to that area. There are only two of them that do not have, in my opinion, adequate screen planting. And they are marked with little X's on that schemata. What I'm prepared to do rather shortly is to go to each and every one of those 13 households on a Sunday afternoon knockup. They know me because I was there many times in the past, most recently last October. And I don't think you're going to have any headaches from that. So I've asked Josh Steinberg and Tom Furman to join me. And we will do this and make sure that we are able to allay any concerns that anybody has. And we'd like to get this through. Lastly,
Thank you very much.
Kyle Verbetsky just signed with the Oakham A's and he played in the media little league. And he lives at 380 Steeplechase Drive in my district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Cynthia Sabatini.
Good evening. Cynthia Sabatini, Upper Providence Township. I have several questions to pose to the administration and board, which I will also forward via email. With respect to the proposed new school, on the Room to Learn, Room to Grow website, the following statement appears. At the time of the 2016 demographic report, about 1,750 new housing units were planned and at some stage of construction within our district, including single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments. My questions are as follows related to this statistic. How many of the approximately 1,750 units have been completed as of year end 2021? What is the completion rate by single-family homes, by townhomes, and by apartments? Of those completed, what is the overall occupancy rate by single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments? In what municipalities are the completed units located? In the individual municipalities, how many single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments have been completed? And what are the associated occupancy rates? The 2016 statistic should be updated on the district website so that the community knows the district is putting forth current numbers. Possibly, the Montgomery Report update issued during the last quarter of 2021 addresses these questions. I had requested a copy of the Montgomery Report update, which I will once again ask for. I did receive the following response from Dr. Di Marino Lennon about the whereabouts of this update. Quote-unquote, "The enrollment information on the district's website is developed with Montgomery Consultants. This is completed annually in October. However, the whereabouts of the update was not noted." The question as to where on the district's website the taxpayers can find this updated report needs to be answered. Once again, I will ask, where is it located? Additionally, the update of Montgomery Report should be posted in a readily accessible fashion on the district's website for all taxpayers to view and analyze. Thank you. And as noted, I will follow up with an email.
Thank you. Our next, oh, quick reminder, those who would like to sign up, we should have a signup sheet in the back. You are welcome to do so. I do want to encourage people to please remember to try to keep to the three minutes. We have a lot of people who would like to speak and the board would like to hear everybody. Our next speaker is Todd Ferrelli.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Todd Ferrelli. I live in Upper Providence Township. I was born and raised in the school district in Upper Providence. And, you know, I've lived in Philadelphia for a time and I'm happy to have moved back here to settle for, you know, to raise my family. So what I want to kind of submit to the board at this point is asking that they introduce what's known as a responsible contracting ordinance for the school district. And if I may, I have some copies here with some insight on apprenticeships and construction skill shortages and the challenges and solutions in this. So currently in Delaware County, there are 11 municipalities and school districts which have what are known as responsible contracting ordinances in place. I liken them to taxpayer protection because it creates a transparency and accountability. It guards against misclassification of workers, which hurts construction workers and negatively affects the tax base. There's even APA law against misclassification. RCO, an RCO is what it's known as. It can give a school district or a municipality protection. Currently, under the Commonwealth law, a public entity must award the lowest qualified bidder. The problem is that there are zero qualifications, even from the Commonwealth. So that this leaves a council or school board to always, by virtue, have to pick the lowest bidder. Otherwise, they are left open to litigation. By instituting, you know, these RCOs, you are creating qualifications that contractors must live up to when performing public works projects. This also gives a public entity the ability to remove a contractor if they have been found guilty of a construction-related crime after they rewarded the project. And I have several examples that I could speak at a, you know, future time about. By ensuring qualified ethical contractors are awarded public work, cost overruns and scheduling issues will be mitigated considerably. If any of you have ever signed a change order, you know what I'm talking about. Some detractors, oh, pardon me. The fact is, when qualified and trained individuals work on a project, because there is apprenticeship language within these RCOs, because you want to have qualified, trained individuals here, they work on these projects. The quality, safety, and scheduling of the project are upheld, along with the budget. And finally, speaking to quality and safety, the children of our community are in these schools. The teachers and the faculty are here. It is paramount that they are protected when in class. I shudder to think what could happen if something such as a large section of, say, ductwork is installed improperly. This could be catastrophic. And to finish up the board, if they would like to contact other school boards or people that have dealt with this sort of, these sort of situations, we would be happy to connect. Thank you.
Mr. Ferrelli, I'm pretty sure the last time I saw you, you were about 10. So it's wonderful to see you as a fine young man. Say hello to your parents for me.
Our next speaker is June Messam.
Good evening. My name is Dr. June Elcock Messam. I live in Upper Providence. And I've had four wonderful children who've come through the school district. I am originally of Guyanese descent, so I'm West Indian. And I wanted to share something with you. I was in high school when I came to this country. And I went to Swanson High School. And a few months after I started there, I was pulled out of my classroom. And my principal had to go through my locker and my school bags because parents had reported that there was a new black girl in school who was selling drugs. My country didn't even have TVs or anything. And my great knowledge of drugs was Mari Jawanna. That's how I thought you pronounced it. I was standing in that hallway terrified of what was going to happen to me. It is 40 years later. And I couldn't stop crying when I heard what happened to Sidney. These things, some like little things, they're huge things. My four children have struggled, all of them, in the middle school in some way with a teacher doing something that we thought was horrendous. We have come to the school and reported it multiple times. My husband has a PhD. I have an MD. We have resources. And Sidney, the best thing that you can do, my dear, is to be successful. Because in our school districts, they were absolutely discouraged from being successful. And that is just heartbreaking. And this is not me being a whiner. This is not me complaining. I read my daughter's law school application, her essay. And I said to her, I failed you as a mother. You have to change this. You don't have to let the world know. You can't write this. Because she had her rage, her rage. And I just remember, I hope and pray that in our school district, we are educators. I know that you mean to do the right thing. You don't want to be the person or to support someone who, 40 years later, even after being so successful, can be brought to tears because I felt all alone all again. We're better than this in the Rose Tree Media School District. I brought my family here. I chose this school district because I didn't expect this. I had had no issues with Pen Press, no issues with Media Elementary. Every single one of my four beautiful kids had issues of racial, racial nature at Springton Lake. That should say something. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jill Burke-Huguet.
I'm Jill Burke-Huguet from Upper Providence. It's a hard name. And I don't know how to follow that, but that was beautiful. Thank you. I'm also here as a parent, as well as an educator. And I'm here in support of this brave young lady who had the courage to speak up, only to be pushed back down. I want to make sure that this doesn't happen again. We live in a school district that espouses a diversity initiative that doesn't stand up to a simple idea, that idea is to celebrate and embrace diversity. Instead, this district decided it didn't know the difference between a fashion choice and a person's culture. This district decided to denigrate cultural diversity rather than embrace and celebrate it. It's not lost on me that this child was forced to remove her hair wrap during Black History Month. It's shameful that this district needs to write into policy explicitly what cultural diversity looks like and that teachers may not ask a student to remove an item of clothing that represents cultural identity. This should not happen again. You are brave and I'm sorry that you have to suffer this trauma. It's not right. You may not know this now or want this burden, but you are paving the way for students like my daughter. And I thank you for that. You make this school district a better place. You are the change. Superintendent, you opened your remarks about embracing cultural diversity. The response of the teacher and the school district administration was disgraceful. Who are we as a community if we don't understand and embrace cultural diversity? Who are we as a community if we allow racial discrimination? Who are we as a community? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lou Stevens.
Good evening. My name's Lou Stevens. I'm from Middletown Township. As a taxpayer in the Rose Tree Media School District for 35 years, I feel it's time for me and my fellow constituents to be heard. I would like to, the RCO language added to all publicly funded projects in the district. The RCO will make the process of finding good contractors who use tops, crass men and women, a lot easier. More importantly, it'll make the process of weeding out the bad apples a whole lot easier also. The contractors that we want working in our school district are the ones that have met all the requirements, have all the licenses and certifications, have not been disbarred, haven't defaulted, and have a clean safety record. been disbarred, haven't defaulted, and have a clean safety record. As educators, you should definitely appreciate the language of the apprenticeship, which means that all the work being done on our projects will be done by men and women who have been properly trained and up to date on all safety rules and regulations and all changes in technologies. The contractors that meet all, from my personal experience, I've been in the business for 42 years, the contractors that meet all the requirements are more likely to complete the work on time and on budget with a higher safety record by far, which leads to less headaches for you and more bang for my buck. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Carlin. John Carlin? Okay. Again, I do apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. Our next speaker is Cornelius Duff.
Good evening. Cornelius Duffy, Upper Providence. I support the reasonable contracting ordinance as well. As a taxpayer, I want the best trained individuals possible working on projects within the community to ensure that the end product is of the highest quality possible. There are many horror stories out there about poor workmanship that ends up costing the community much more than the original budget is called for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Todd Younger.
Thank you. My name is Todd Younger. I live at 425 Willigate Lane. I am a Rose Tree Media District alumni. I've been here my whole entire life. I grew up here, the whole nine yards. But I'm sure the school board will rectify the whole thing. I have confidence in this board. I know that they support our community. I feel strong about this board. The reason why I'm here is also to address the fact that, you know, I am an IBW member. I've spent a lot of years learning my trade, working hard. I spent five years on an apprenticeship. I spent 8,000 man hours just getting through my apprenticeship training and learning. I'm supporting the COC, COC, whatever it is, whatever you name it. I'm supporting that so that the responsible contract language is put into play. And I just hope that my school board that has supported me throughout the years will continue to support me and my endeavor with responsible contract language. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Anderson.
How you doing? My name is Kevin Anderson. I'm from Middletown Township. I also am supporting the responsible contract ordinance. This is to ensure the public projects in our school districts are completed timely, reliable, and fast effective manner, requiring these contractors and prospective subcontractors all be required to meet pre-established and clearly defined minimum standards prior to being awarded township contracts and an exercise to do diligence on the part of our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Luft.
Applause before I speak. Wow. Good evening. My name is Tom Luft. I reside in Upper Providence Township. Dr. D, kudos to you for submitting the new revision to the health and safety plan. It's a step in the right direction, but my argument tonight is that the plan needs a complete overhaul. According to the Pew Research Center, Americans' trust in our government is near an all-time low. Earlier this month, the New York Times published an article detailing that the CDC isn't releasing large portions of data to the public. The CDC hid statistics on booster efficacy. They failed to track breakthrough infections and refused to release information on the underlying health conditions of children hospitalized with COVID-19. The American Academy of Pediatrics repeatedly asked the CDC for contagiousness data and the CDC stonewalled them. Level-headed, rational people rely on data like this to make impactful decisions in their daily lives. Fortunately, many private medical organizations in other countries like Israel and the UK were forthcoming with their data on these subjects. Now there is a new division in this country. Those that believe the government narrative without question and those that make informed decisions based on all the data available. Our health and safety plan is riddled with references to the CDC. The CDC is more of a political organization now than a scientific organization and we do not trust them. A private organization you cite in the plan is the CHOP Policy Lab. I'm much more inclined to listen to what they have to say. Dr. D, you referenced the CHOP Policy Lab's three factors for constructing a health and safety plan during this month's work session. Those factors are, one, community case numbers, two, the risk of severe disease, and three, the competing risk of maintaining strict requirements. The competing risk of maintaining strict requirements, also known as the cost of enforcing mandates. What are the nasty side effects of suppressing people's liberty? Here are some headlines that have been out for months now. NBC News, June 11, 2021, youth suicide attempts soared during the pandemic. ABC News, September 16, 2021, childhood obesity in U.S. accelerated during the pandemic. USA Today, November 22, 2021, pandemic first graders are way behind in reading. It wasn't the SARS-CoV-2 virus that created all these problems with our children. It was the lockdowns, the closures, the mandates, and the anxieties that parents and teachers pass on to their kids. I hope those folks didn't just create the next health crisis in our country. It's time to completely overhaul our health and safety plan. We not only need to remove government sources that have lied and withheld information from us, but the plan must now eliminate mandates and focus on the psychological and intellectual damage to our children that this whole fiasco has caused. We are standing by to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Radcliffe.
Hello, I'm Jessica Radcliffe of Middletown Township. I have struggled with what to comment here for days, but here's a summary of what keeps going through my mind. First, children and parents should be given the choice to mask or not mask. Second, an environment of respect on others' opinions needs to be reestablished throughout the district. And finally, the district needs to change its focus back to what matters, the education of our children. If after two years, you truly believe that masking your child is in his or her best interest, then I respect that and I support that. However, what I ask is that you also respect our choice, that we are given the option to mask our children or not, especially when the rules are arbitrary. Why are children allowed to be unmasked on the basketball court, but then they have to mask up in the hallways? There's no sense of consistency. There's even no sense of consistency between gym teachers. One gym teacher allows their children to be unmasked, one gym teacher allows their children to be masked. So just allow it to be a choice among families. Let the families choose what's best for their child. Secondly, along the same lines, we're asking that whatever choice is made by each individual family is respected. No child should have to hear, "You will die and kill others if you take your mask off," which was an actual quote from Piers Tadez at Indian Lane. Nor should a child be shamed for choosing to keep on his mask. Finally, let's go back to what really matters, focusing on education of our children. We cannot, as a community, focus on giving the children the best education they deserve. We are bickering about mask choice at a time when all neighboring districts have made the decision to drop masks. Have you looked at your children's PSSA scores lately? They came out recently. I have and I was unpleasantly surprised, but also not surprised. When I reached out to Mr. Reed about the scores, he confirmed my fear that lower scores were common. And I quote from his email, "COVID played a huge role in where students were at the end of last year and we are hopeful that throughout the end of last year, at the consistency of this year, our students will continue to move towards achievement levels comparable to pre-pandemic times." I agree with Mr. Reed. It's time to get back to achievement levels of pre-pandemic times. And we won't be able to do that if we continue to bow down to the out-of-date health and safety plan, dare I say scrap it altogether. And by the way, if we're really concerned about the health of our kids, this might be a time to assess the sugary snacks and meals we're providing at breakfast and lunch, but that's an argument for another time. Let's leave the health decisions out of the school board's hands, put them back into families' control, and go back to focusing on providing that robust curriculum and experience promised in the RTMSD mission statement.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Clements.
Thank you. My name is Bob Clements. I live in media. Just to recap, previously I've asked for safety and efficacy data with the masking, with the mandates from a number of different departments. It's never been provided. I know that we're supposed to be following the experts, but like we talked about before, that those goalposts are constantly changing. The data is very creatively put together and most of the studies that we're depending on, the CDC is referencing, we're not peer reviewed at all. So I'm not really sure if we should be following those experts anymore. I think a lot of the ideas that have been said so far in here tonight are more in line with what we should be doing. Quote, "There is currently no evidence that wearing a mask, whether medical or other types, by healthy persons in the wider community setting, including universal community masking, can prevent them from infection with respiratory viruses, including COVID-19." That was from the World Health Organization. So again, there's an expert quote, but somehow that got left out in a lot of the guidelines. I have a number of other quotes here, but I won't go into those. Again, and beyond just the science, we get into the authority. And this is what my point was the last time we all met. You know, again, PA Supreme Court ruled the Department of Health cannot act on a whim or fiat in all matters concerning disease without specific laws or regulations that empower such regulations. So there's a big, big, big question of authority here and it really comes down to just family choice. We can't overrule that. If you want to wear a mask, that's great. Everyone here will support that. No one's going to argue that. But you shouldn't be forced to wear a mask and we shouldn't be forcing that. We don't have the authority to force that. No one in this room does. There's also a pending lawsuit right now that actually the entire argument is that no school district has been granted any specific legal authority to require students to wear face masks. And it's looking like it's heading in the direction of the person, of the group that brought that case. So again, it really just comes down to authority. We've worked with this. It's been years now. The kids are fed up with it. A lot of people are scared. They're going to be bullied, singled out, discriminated against if they stand up against these mandates. So that's why the number of us is growing to be that voice for people that do want to speak up against it and, you know, don't want to keep kids in masks. There's a lot of negative effects and we're ignoring all of those and we're just going along with, you know, this out-of-date science that came from three non-peer-reviewed studies. It's ignoring three to four decades worth of established science that says these mandates really don't make a big difference. And they haven't and they won't. So it should be up to everyone's choice. I agree with previous comments that the health and safety plan should potentially be scrapped if not reevaluated pretty aggressively and pretty quickly. So with optional masking coming on Monday, that's great. I would just propose that the optional component of that remains a permanent fixture against all mandates, whether or not the health and safety plan is evaluated.
Our next speaker is Lori Mizulo.
Hello, Lori Mizulo. I live in Edgemont. When I was putting my thoughts together tonight to think about what I was going to say, had no idea of some of these horrible stories I heard tonight and kind of what I'm going to say goes hand in hand with that. A little bit about myself because I want you to know where I'm coming from. I spent 15 years teaching at Academy Park High School in Darby Township. If you're not familiar with it, it's one of the lowest economic socioeconomic disadvantaged areas in Delaware County. I also currently mentored some lovely ladies and young high school girls in Chester. I've seen firsthand the disparity between underprivileged and the privileged in the educational system today. I know what these kids are up against. I know they don't get the same advantages starting from a very young age where it matters the most. I'm imagining that you know, according to U.S. News and World Report, that Media Elementary School enrolls 27% minority students. One in 10 of the students that attend the school are economically disadvantaged. And yet, Rose Tree Media School District wants to build their brand-new school, state-of-the-art fancy elementary school in the wealthiest part of the district, where the students that will attend this school are likely the most economically privileged kids in the district. In fact, many kids in the area of the district are so privileged, they go to private schools that cost upwards of $20,000. How do you justify building a school like this for the kids that already have a great start in life and leaving the most vulnerable students stuck in the dilapidated, un-air-conditioned, non-refurbished schools? Why aren't we working at putting our tax dollars into making the current schools state-of-the-art, expanding them, air conditioning them, making them a place where you can say all students are equally important? What does building this new school in Edgemont say about this district? I'm not happy with what it says and I feel like, and it looks like, and it will look like when that school is built, that there's a culture of white privilege here. It's not right. And there's going to be a lot to say when that school is built.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Reiser.
Hi, my name is Mike Reiser. I live in Edgemont, a privileged township.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
You're here to speak to the board, you need to speak to the board, please.
Well, I want everybody to hear this. You guys have said, you know, I think it's important that everybody hears what I have to say.
Excuse me, sir. You'll hear it with the microphone, but this is to address the board during a legislative meeting.
Okay. I feel so sorry for what you went through at our school, at our middle school. And I live, I am like Ukraine. They want to build this school around my house on three sides. And like, I did some studies, homework. I went into the census, statistics for the last census, and I Googled Edgemont Township. I Googled, they showed age breakdown rate. And we have just under 4,200 residents in Edgemont. They're saying the growth is there, of which over 500 of them live in the White Horse Retirement Village. The last time I checked, Retirement Village, they're not having kids there. I don't know. Does any retirement people have any kids? I don't think so. I also looked at Middletown, where they have around 14,000 residents. Those people are less privileged, same as people in media. Why would you build an elite school to compete with what, the private schools? So the kids will go back to the private school, to public schools? That's wrong. That's wrong. I, I'm just blown away, the lack of transparency of this school district. I was never notified that that was chosen. So one of my neighbors got it through the room to grow from their, from their kids that went to the school. Because only if, it, it just blew me away last summer. And I'm doing my own homework and I'm talking to people in my township. And I'm like, why put it up here? There's only going to be 100 kids maybe that'll go to this school from Edgemont Township. You're going to bus 200 to 300 kids up to Edgemont? And give them a nice half hour, 40 minute bus ride up to Edgemont? To go to a school in an area where probably more than half the kids go to private, prokial schools? There is no integrity or transparency in this school board or this school superintendent. There's none. Just seeing this example of this poor child here, I didn't expect to hear this. I'm shocked. We're supposed to be better than that. This is a direct reflection of the board, the superintendent, and the way they, they just set the standards and the way they follow up and live what they preach. Hypocrisy is great. We don't want our taxes to go out the window, go off through this roof, but we really don't need it. Let's renovate the schools we have, put additions on them. Let's give parity in the facilities. Let's pay our teachers more. Cut upper level people that aren't even in the classrooms, teaching our children. Our priorities are screwed up. Education has changed drastically since pandemic. We've got to, we've got to adapt towards, you know, I'm fed up. I've had enough for you guys. I think you should resign.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alicia Windsor.
My name is Alicia Windsor and I live in Middletown Township. Safety is a word that has seemed to lose its true meaning since the onset of COVID. At these meetings, we observe discussions and procedures put in place by all of you for the health and safety of our children. But it appears, especially from this meeting, that this is just out of convenience for when it correlates with other agendas. If the health of our children was a true concern, why haven't you stopped serving fried sugary school foods in our school's cafeteria? If the safety of our children was a true concern, why are we allowing the segregation of children who choose to not to wear a mask versus those who do? Where is your inclusion? If the safety of our children is a true concern, why is bullying condoned throughout the district? If the safety of our children was a true concern, Dr. D, why did you let a satanic doggo group infiltrate our school? When with just a look on their website, they promote the freedom to offend and necessary pursuit should prevail over laws and institutions? If the health of our children is a true concern, why have you not addressed that last year, the second leading cause of death between the ages of 10 and 18 is suicide? You preach health and wellbeing of our students, yet it's paramount. Yet with the mental health issues related to COVID and masks on the rise, you continue to ignore the request of students in your district who have bravely been here where we stand today to plead for a return to normalcy so that they can flourish, learn and grow. The CDC just lowered the standards for children to be able to have word development. Now they just need to know 50 words by 30 months instead of 24, setting the bar much lower and being identified later in life. This highlights the negative effects of masking and it's just setting our children up for failure. I want to believe that we're better than this and I want to believe that our district is better than this. So we need to stop pushing our adult fears onto our children. It is not our children's responsibility to protect anyone. That is our job. Children should not have the responsibilities that adults cannot handle. It appears that you cannot handle the responsibility of the health and safety of our children with skewed statistics and outdated health and safety plans. Please make masking optional now.
Our next speaker is Gina Pisasal.
Hello. Thank you all for your work. Everyone for being here. My name is Gina Pisasal. And I'm from Media Borough. And I am here to stand in support of the incredible Sidney Whitman. I'm like a little bit shaky right now, so I can't imagine your bravery right now. And your family as well. I am the mother of a first and third grader at Media Elementary and on the leadership team of Media Elementary's Fair Parent Group. In my professional life, I'm the Director of Equity and Organizational Culture at the McCarter Theatre Center, which is part of Princeton University. My first time speaking to this body was in support of Mr. Harrison and the new position Administrator for Safe and Inclusive Schools. I know enough about the recent events of revert racism at Springton Lakes Middle School and the handling of the situation to now feel a little foolish about voicing my complete support. Or to name it more specifically, I feel so sad that the district's critical consciousness and analysis of racial inequity revealed by correspondences by Superintendent DeMarina Lennon and also the board is so much less informed and involved than I had thought. Especially with all of the investment and work with DCIU and as equity and wellness are named as the two of four core values in the 2018 to 24 strategic plan, as well as the promise of the, to work to create a safe, quote, "a safe environment that celebrates diversity." We are here to keep you accountable to your own stated values and goals. In the case of the Whitman family, you have failed and revealed massive gaps in your understanding of systemic racism. You heard demands tonight for vital action to be taken. But what keeps echoing in my head as I learn more and more pieces about this story is that the district only talked about this event as if this was a problem to be solved, but this event was the problem. Racist events are symptoms of a deeper malady. It is fitting that we're also talking about masking tonight. There is a virus among us that has killed 3,024 people just today. And we have changed systems to keep our community healthy. Masking, remote teaching, thank the teachers, hybrid learning, social distancing, limited physical interaction, testing, vaccination, policy changes, et cetera. We have changed systems. We have not treated COVID-19 with over the counter cold medicine. To adjust racism, you cannot just solve one symptom. You have to listen and learn and understand how it got here, how it spread so ubiquitously. I'm pausing. Can I reclaim that time? I'm going to take that as a sound of support. So you have to listen and learn and understand how it got here, how it spread so ubiquitously, even among those who studied up and how it's everywhere. And then get to work to counter it, so to prevent. I appreciate your enthusiasm. Then work to counter it. Can I have time back? From the bell, please? I have like, I know.
You can have half a minute back.
Sure. So we get to work to counter it, to prevent giving it to our kids and to involve parents, caretakers and the larger community. Yes, please listen and address this family's needs within your aim of creating a sense of belonging. But know that that is not anti-racism work. Anti-racism work is where entire systems get questioned and changed. Question policies. Question if you feel good about lifting pieces of our history in February that should have been lifted as a part of our history all along. Question who was, who has power and how it does not want to admit gaps, failures and wrongdoing. We all fail. You did it here. Just do better next time because there will be a next time. Please don't make me feel foolish for hoping that you can.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Hannibal.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer. I am also here in support of Sidney Whitman. In fact, that I am a version of Sidney Whitman. I am a black African American who often use hair scarves, hair rats, bandanas to protect my hair or to just celebrate my culture at any time. As I sit here and I look at the panel of you guys on the board, most of you don't have to worry about that. Most of you don't share that with Sidney. That teacher who singled her out on that day decided that, hmm, today is the day that I'm going to put and reflect on someone's choices to embrace their culture. This is not something that Sidney just decided, oh, well, today I'm going to pick up and I'm going to put on my hair scarf. This is something that she has been doing routinely, something that I've noticed her to do. Probably in the last six, seven months, her mother does it, I do it. It's a part of us. It's who we are. As I sit here and I listen to everyone come up and speak to you guys about the discrimination, on the microaggression for racism, and I look at your face, I'm wondering whether or not if I could be a person that's confident that you will address this. Because this is a situation that has been brought to you, but what about the situations before Sidney? Or those that will come after Sidney? As an example, as the lady before me spoke about, we have to start somewhere. It's 2022. There is no way that a person of Afro, West Indian, Caribbean descent should have to be singled out by the way she chooses to style her hair or protect her hair. You all have cell phones, computers, access to internet. There's something called the Cure Act. Hair Care, I'm trying to think of the name of it. Crown Act. I do apologize. It's the Crown Act. Google it. Make yourself familiar with that bill. It prohibits discrimination against a woman of Afro descent to be denied the way she chooses to wear her hair, whether it's natural, whether it's covered based off of their religion, their culture. Familiarize yourself with those different things. It's very important because there's no way that a child should have to feel humiliated, embarrassed, alone, under the watch of adults, educators at that. It's your job to be there for these children. They show up to school. They should feel confident that if something was to happen, that it won't be the adult that I have to worry about. That's going to make me feel small that day. That I'm going to be able to turn to another adult and say, hey, this is my religion. This is my culture. Can you support and back me on this? I feel alone. I'm sad. I'm in tears to have her family email the superintendent and just get a very generalized exception to the rule for Sidney Whitman. But there's other Sidney Whitmans at that school. I am a Sidney Whitman. My niece is a middle schooler at Springton Lake Middle. She's a Sidney Whitman and there's others.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next, ma'am, our next speaker is Kiki Ari.
Because this is my problem here as I sit here.
Ma'am, we have other speakers. Kiki Ari is our next speaker.
Are you tuning in? Please find it in your heart to educate yourself on others, the way they have to show up. We wake up daily worrying about how do we style our hair? How do we protect our, how do we become presentable to be the person that's not singled out for our culture? Okay? It's not something that we choose. We all can't relate to everyone's culture, but we can educate ourselves on that. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Kiki Ari.
Good evening. So first of all, I just want to thank the board and administration for all of your efforts over the last two years now around the COVID pandemic. I think our schools have been open more than a lot of other schools and I've been very grateful for that. Because having the kids home on virtual is not a good option for us, for most people. And also very grateful to all the parents who have spoken up about their, you know, passionate beliefs on this issue on both sides. I think, I think we all agree, we just want what's best for our children's health, for their physical health, for their mental health. So I think we all have that common and maybe just disagree on what is the best thing for their physical and mental health. I think we all also want COVID to be over. It's been two years. We're exhausted. And I'll go out on a limb and say, I, I think we all want to get to the point where our kids are not wearing masks. I know that I want to get to the point where we get back to what feels like normal. I am concerned that we're not there yet. We have been talking about the health and safety plan for a long time. We have a health and safety plan that says we will go to mask optional and moderate transmission. We're very likely to be in moderate transmission in maybe one week, maybe two weeks. But as of today, we're still at like 80, 89 per 100,000, which is considered high substantial. I do believe that the CDC and the AAP, the American Academy of Pediatrics, have our best public health interest in mind, which is different than personal health. It's different than what's best for my individual child. It's a public health perspective. It's about what's best for the community and what is going to get us out of this mess. And that's what I want. I want to get out of this mess. I want to get to the point where we're at low transmission, where we don't have to worry about this anymore. And at each stage, when we have pulled back mitigation strategies too soon, we wind up just having more cases and having to go back, back again and again. It's like Groundhog Day. So while I understand the difficulty of masking and the desire to not do it, I don't like doing it. I just want to urge the board to stay the course. We maybe have like another week or two until we are at the level where we can safely go to a mask optional. And I also want to acknowledge that there are more than 20 parents here in the audience tonight, community members that are not wearing masks, that are just blatantly flouting the rule despite the fact that they're here tonight because they want you to vote to change the health and safety plan. I don't really understand that, coming here to ask you to do that and then blatantly just fluff. People at home can't see that, but a third of the room is not wearing masks and it's not been enforced. So that's a little bit offensive and interrupting me when I'm speaking is also offensive. So I will just finish by saying, public health guidance is just that. It's for the public. It's about the community. It's not about the individual. And what we need to get out of this is to think as a community and how we take care of the most vulnerable in the community is important and continues to be important. Everyone says Omicron is mild, but it's also had the highest death rate, more so than, than Delta, which is not out of this yet. So I'm going to encourage the board to just stay the course so that we can get out of this. And I respect whatever decision you make and I thank you for your service.
I would ask that the audience show every speaker the respect. We have a number of speakers, everyone with varied opinions and it is important that we allow them to have their turn to speak. Our next speaker is, I do apologize if I mispronounce your name, Casey Coburn Girardi.
My name is Casey Coburn Girardi. I'm a resident of Media Borough. I'm a parent of two daughters in kindergarten and third grade at Media Elementary School. And I'm here to speak regarding the masking policy and the health and safety plan. I'm asking this board to continue to protect the health and safety of our community and our children and stay the course. The health and safety plan as it stands now does lift the mask mandate when we get to moderate or low transmission. That is not very far away, but we are not there yet. We are at a still substantial level of transmission. And as the health and safety plan provides, masks must be required. At the elementary school level, the children are not nearly as vaccinated at the high school and middle school level. For 12, for children under 12, we are at maybe a third to 50% vaccinated status. My daughter has asthma. Every time she gets sick, she has to go on a flare plan. She has a significant cough. She struggles every single time. She wears a mask diligently. She's one of the few that wears a mask on the playground. She wears it at all of her activities. She doesn't complain about it. She's used to it because she would rather be in school. Because she wasn't in school last year. She was at home to protect her health and safety. The children that she plays with on the playground often don't have their masks on and that's fine. That's, that's allowed. But it has caused my daughter to get sick and every time she gets sick, we follow the rules. She gets a runny nose. I contact the nurse. I keep her home. I get her tested. And I can see in this room that many family members do not follow the rules of the health and safety plan. So if you lose, if you lift the mask mandate, more children are going to get sick, whether it be COVID or the cold or a flu. And they're going to come to school with those illnesses and people are going to get sick because these people do not follow rules. The rules provide that if you have a runny nose, you have to stay home and get tested. That's our current health and safety plan and that's not going to change when you lift the mask mandate. So then we're going to have more children at home, not going to school, not learning in person because they have to follow that plan. So if we can reduce and wait until the transmission is lower, we encourage the ability of children to stay in school as much as possible. The children at the elementary school level, again, vaccination rate is still pretty low. So the, the risk of transmission is, is higher. I looked at the health and safety plans of neighboring districts that have moved to mask optional and they have stronger mitigation efforts in place. They report daily numbers. They report daily numbers. If you want to give parents the option to choose, you have to give them the information to make that choice. And by reporting numbers one day a week, and then deciding on Friday whether we will pivot to a mask required option does not take into consideration the previous five dates. So if we have an outbreak, like was at Indian Lane in November and December, on a Monday, where six kids in one class get COVID-19, we have to wait till the following Monday to enforce the mask mandate under the proposed that changes to the Health and Safety Plan. And that does not protect the health and safety of our children or our community. So I'm just asking to stay the course until the transmission rates are in a lower level, which will not be that wrong if we keep it up. And veto the changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm having trouble reading the name. I think our next speaker is John Thomas.
Hi, my name's John Thomas. I live in the borough. My wife and I both went through Roast Street Media School District, my two daughters. My five grandchildren went through Roast Street Media. I support the responsible contracting ordinance because I want the construction projects happening in our community to be the safest possible to the workers on site and for the general public around that worksite. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, folks, we are supposed to be voting later on on the Health and Safety Plan. As of right now, masks are required while you're on school campus. Please put your masks on or we'll ask security to come find you. Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Sean Kemper.
Hi, my name is Sean Keeney.
My apologies for the mispronunciation.
That's okay. My name is Sean Keeney. I'm a resident and a taxpayer of Roast Tree. This is my son, Sean. Sean, please stand up over here. This is my son, Sean. Uh, the lady said, talking about the most vulnerable people. He's standing right here. He's standing right here. Benjamin Franklin once said that if you want to give up your freedoms for safety and security, you deserve neither. I'm a union operating engineer. I've worked hard to get to where I was and where I came from, to move to this district to give my children better off than where I was. As a parent and this taxpayer of this district, I'm finished with these draconian measurements that do not work. The Omicron, the, the masks don't work. The CDC said it. They said it doesn't work. Has anybody been fitted for a, a mask here before to wear N95s? I have. And if you don't have the N95 completely over your face, it's not doing anything. And if somebody has something to refute me on that, I'll be more than happy to dispute that with you. I've lived in fear for too long now. When I first thought, heard about the coronavirus, I was the only one who left my house because my, my immune compromised son and my immune compromised wife was Reynolds. I went to the shopping centers. I did all the shopping for the food. I came home. I wiped down. Made sure I changed my clothes. Obviously, being, uh, having Down Syndrome, you're immune compromised. Uh, some people may not know that, but, um, so I lived in the fear of what I didn't know. And, uh, that time ignorance is over. We have, um, homeopathic remedies and the vaccine. The vaccine's been going on now for how long? Over a year? I think all the people who've wanted to get the vaccine have got it. Uh, I'm not inclined or, um, I'm not against vaccines because I think they do help. Um, but it's time to bring back common sense, people. Uh, if we keep on following the science, and if you have your vaccine, you should have nothing to fear. You have your vaccine. You have nothing to fear anymore, guys. This has been going on for too long. And if you didn't, if you didn't get the vaccine, that's your prerogative. We live in America. All these people, I've heard this woman come here. My family came over here, my fourteen-year-old great-grandmother from Ukraine, where it's getting bombed right now. She came over here by herself to, to the simple fact that they, you could do whatever you want. As long as you put in the forth the effort and you work hard, and this is a great place to live. Stop taking away what you guys have taken away from us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanne Torillo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Kender. I'm a Media Borough resident. And I'm here to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kender, and we must have two Sean Keeners and a Sean Kender. My apologies, sir. Ms. Joanne will call on you in just one second there. My apologies. All right, please go ahead, sir.
No problem. You had something to say, so I respected that. Um, I just, uh, I'm here for the responsible contracting ordinance. Um, with all the talk tonight of health and safety, I want to make sure that when we're building schools, that we have highly skilled workers building the schools that my children and the children of my neighbors attend. This ensures the work is performed correctly without any possible danger to students, teachers, and staff of that school. And as I can see tonight, that is important to all of us, is everyone's safety, and this is a matter that should be open to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, our next speaker is Joanne Torillo.
Joanne Torillo, Edgemont Township. Good evening. I'm speaking tonight to share my real life experiences in this district to give you some insight on how your Health and Safety Plan is potentially impacting our students. We as a community have been very patient and actually very compliant. Honestly, enough is enough. Two weeks to flatten the curve, check. Once vaccines are available, check. Once seventy percent of the community is vaccinated, check. Once vaccines are available to the five to twelve-year-olds, check. No federal or state mandate for masking, check, check. We've never reacted in such a manner in this district before, and we've lived through H1N1, the flu, strep, and noroviruses. Masks were never on the table. Our community has allowed fear to take over our common sense. My kids have been in this district from K through twelve, and there are some very important issues that concerned the education of our students that we've tackled over the years together. Things like class size, retention of music and arts programs, when Algebra One was skipped for a whole track of students, and expanding science and math track offerings at the high school. These things directly impact the immediate and future education of our students. There are so many areas that still need your attention that relate to education, such as the math curriculum and learning loss that was created based on decisions to shut down our schools, even though our rankings have been dropping even before the pandemic. My direct experience regarding consequences of masking start with my son, who is currently a senior. He was under the services of the IU from the age of two for hearing N O T and required extensive speech therapy. When we went for an audiology test prior to entering kindergarten, instead of sounds, it was the first time they used words as the audiologist covered her mouth while my son and I sat on the other side of the glass. The initial sheer panic in my son's face because he could not see her mouth for the first time was gut-wrenching. It was then that I realized that he had depended on reading lips to learn his words. That was devastating to watch. How many of our learners K through two are struggling with phonetics because they can't see the formation of the sounds? Decisions have consequences. Secondly, when sitting in the most recent SAB meeting and hearing concerns of our elementary school parents, the concern that their second graders are behind in their reading. These kids haven't known anything but masks, and it is making a negative impact on learning that we will have ripple effect through the district for years to come. Our kids have to mask all day, and they leave the school grounds and literally don't have to mask anywhere else. Do you think they're going home in isolation? Surrounding districts including Marple, Springfield, Havreford, Ridley, Wallingford, Swatford, Pendelco, Garnet Valley, Radnor, and Great Valley have all voted to go mask optional. I think it's time RTMSD does as well. We also need to stop testing kids with no symptoms. Even the Child Policy Lab recommends this practice. Currently, vaccines are available to all students and families, teachers, and staff that want or need them. This was the original benchmark to eliminate the need for mask wearing, which was a lie. Everyone needs to take responsibility to manage their own risk and make decisions for their own families accordingly. We cannot continue to create and enable a society based on fear. And yes, some teachers are still telling the kids that if they don't wear their mask, they're going to kill their grandparents. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Gallagher.
Good evening. I'm Jack Gallagher. Uh, I'm from Middletown Township. Uh, I spoke at the last, uh, school board meeting, and I admit the first half of the speech was a joke. But the next half was about how I believe the masks work. Uh, while I do believe in masks and that they do actually work against COVID, I would like to see the mask mandate dropped as a student in high school. At the last meeting, I was confronted afterwards by people trying to convince me that their experience in cement work gave them medical experience. Do not come up to me after this speech. I don't care about your opinions and you are not medically qualified. I also reported to, I was also reported to the school by someone who worked for the district. I guess my speech that talked about fast and furious and how sweaty I was seemed to be too controversial for some. Not the ones before me comparing vaccination cards to the Holocaust. But that is not the main thing I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about computers in the school library. They're so slow. It is insane. Uh, I have to type something and hope that I don't press the wrong key because I have to wait about five to ten seconds for what I typed to show on the screen. I printed one picture today from my environmental science class. It took fifteen minutes. That's not like a hyperbole. It's not like an exaggeration. It took fifteen minutes. I saw the clock. Um, I think we need to put funding in small projects that affect us largely. About two hundred kids use the library every day, and about a quarter of them, that's fifty kids, to say the math, uh, use the computers to print. Please give us computers that were made before the Cold War and aren't the size of small TVs. It would probably make more sense to have typewriters in our library than those bricks with electricity that we have the audacity to call computers. I imagine that we have a little bit of money saved up, and I think that we should put a little bit of that into something that is used by almost every student in the school. Also, come out to the Senior Variety Show tomorrow at two o'clock and seven o'clock. Uh, go Birds. Look at my suit. Look at my suit.
Thank you very much. Again, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. It's a little hard to read the, um, the name. I think it's Maxwell Paul Phillips.
Good evening. I'm Maxwell Phillips, a ninth grader at Penn Crest, and before I start, I should mention a few things. Firstly, I believe that Sidney Whitman had an amazing speech and that every member of the school board should, uh, think, think hard and appreciate exactly what she said. Furthermore, I'm not here with the Penn Crest High School TV production program or any other high school program. I'm only here to provide the perspective of a student. The issue I stand before you to discuss is the mask mandate in Penn Crest High School. I absolutely believe in the effectiveness of masks in our school and worldwide. However, Delaware County is averaging a near sixty-eight cases per day compared to almost fifteen hundred cases per day in January, according to the New York Times. In addition to this, over the last fourteen days, the cases per day have gone down roughly seventy-two percent. Because of this, I'm asking that the school board choose to end the mask mandate at Penn Crest. Masks do negatively affect the learning environment for some students, and that's why the option to wear a mask as opposed to being a requirement will be more of a positive than a negative. I myself, as well as many other students, have troubles with masks. Normally, I would not be opposed to, uh, be wearing masks and would wear them despite these troubles. Given the statistics I just mentioned, I think it's worth it to end the mask mandate. These troubles can include, you know, just focusing to the ability, focusing to the ability to fool around with them. They're really easy to mess around with. And you can't hear teachers. There's a lot of problems that I have noticed that masks cause, and albeit small, I think that in lieu of the statistics I had mentioned, that we should, um, we should end the mask mandate. And I should note that I'm absolutely not here to dump on the people that may continue to wear them or believe that we should not end the mask ma- mask mandate. In fact, if it was just a few months ago and the decision to end the mask mandate was made, I would have chosen to wear my mask during school hours. But instead, I'm here to ask you to remove it for at least a trial period in lieu of the statistics provided. I should also mention that the Penn Crest varsity show is Saturday, February twenty-sixth, and there will be shows at two P M and seven P M, and tickets are set ten dollars at the door. I'm in it, by the way, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice suit as well. All right, our next speaker is Kathy Buckley.
Hi, I'm Kathy Buckley. I'm from Edgemont, and I got accused of harassing a student. Jack, would you like to see what you said? He told me that I wasn't a doctor and I don't know anything. I was explaining to him that I have advanced degrees and I write the safety program for a construction company, and we have to deal with the masks. Like Sean said, who's an operator, we've been working this whole time. We have firsthand knowledge of this virus. We've been told lies. To have a mask, you have to go through a chain training program. The N95s work ninety-five percent of the time. They don't work on viruses. There's stuff to stop dust, and there's a whole list of items. Viruses are not on that list. I want to bring in my mask here. Want to know how we are played? It says made in China. Here's our test that you had to buy CVS if you could get it. Look at the back. Made in China. I deal with data. I'm an engineer. I only deal with math. I went on Penn Doc's website, right here. This bell curve, I know you can't see it that big. See how there's nothing over here, and then it goes to a big curve? Do you know where it starts? I'm picking on this mouse. It doesn't work anyway. Okay, sixty years old. That's where the curve goes up. If you're under sixty, you are not dying of this virus. CDC has come up. You have to have four, oh, abilities to die. obesity, diabetes. So if you want to stop this virus, get to the gym. Get these kids outside running. Sidney, I am so sorry what you went through. The disrespect is unbelievable. I've been in construction for thirty-five years. I felt your pain. I was crying back there. And when that little kid, Jack, disrespected me, that's why Mama Bear came out. Okay, here are the numbers from Pennsylvania. Forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven deaths in Pennsylvania. But confirmed cases, two million, two hundred sixty-three and thirty-nine. If you take the one number divided by two million, we're under one percent. You are making everyone wear masks, mandates, vaccines and stuff for less than one percent, mostly being over sixty years old. Yes, there are some that die that are younger. I am sorry. I do not mean to offend or hurt anyone at all that has issues, had problems. You might have a tough time with this virus. You're not going to die though, most likely. And.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mason Frederick.
Let's go, ten years old.
Let's go, 10 years old.
Hi, my name is Mason Frederick and I'm 10 years old and I'm a student at Indian Lake. I'm just going to say that I just want, that I just want a normal school year with no masks. You guys don't want hoods, hats and etc. because it covers your head. You need to see our full head, but a hood or hat and etc. just covers the back of our head and the top of our head. But a mask covers our face, so it's, so it's even harder to identify the adult or kid. So I don't want you to just sit here and listen to me and everybody else. I want you to really take this in and think about all of these speeches and statements for a little while.
Thank you, Mason. Kate Douglas is our next speaker.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Board and ladies and gentlemen who join us here this evening. I came here tonight to talk about the current safety and health plan and, and the masking optional, only to be mortified by those who've gone before me. Sidney, you're fantastic, fantastic woman, you will be successful. I applaud you for coming out here tonight. And I'm so sorry for the disrespect that was brought upon you by our teachers. Folks, leadership starts at the top, okay? You obviously need to do better training. So your principals, your principals need to train these teachers better. To call out a student in front of their classmates is bullying, okay? If another student had done that, you would have probably called them out, considered it bullying, okay? To, to, to make, to allow other students to laugh. It sounds like there's a lot bigger issues here that need to be addressed. Instead of you spending the amount of money you're proposing on a new school, it sounds like some of these kids need some new hardware. It sounds like Media Elementary needs an upgrade. Why don't we work internally on what we've got right here, right now? Similar to our country, right? We should be focusing on ourselves before reaching out to help everybody else in this world. Why don't you start right here, focus on what we've got in front of us, focus on Sidney, other kids who've been bullied. I hope to God you've addressed this with these teachers. It's a disgrace. Remember, leadership starts at the top. I hold all of you accountable for what happened to this young girl. All right. Health and safety plan, okay? With, with all the people that were coughing in here tonight, Jesus, we've, we've gone over the 2% threshold just to here tonight. And, and, and we're, we're going to be back in masks should you vote them off, this thing needs to be trashed. My, my friends amongst us this evening spoke about stats, articles, etc. Proving that this health and safety plan needs to be rewritten, wiped out. It, it, it should be a choice, okay? There's harm in wearing a mask, as you may feel there's harm if you don't wear the mask, okay? One of my children in class today overheard students saying that if they don't wear a mask, they're going to die. What? You're okay with the fear that teachers, parents, yourselves are instilling the issues that are going to happen later on in life? I mean, come, this is going to, I, I, just unbelievable, unbelievable. I want to thank Dr. Messam for getting up here and speaking tonight. It's, it's, it's astonishing that that happened to her 40 years ago, whatever it was in this district, and it's still going on here, right? Just, just, just astonishing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I apologize, I think it's Tamara Graham or it could be Samara Graham, Tamara Graham.
Let's see, hold on, I think. Yeah, I, I think I got it all. But I'm just going to double check. No, I got it. Hey, thank you.
My name is Tamara Graham and I'm a Media Borough resident. And 2022 marks over 100 years of my family living in Media Borough. So before there was Penn Crest and Springton Lake, when Media High School and all those things. I've also four boys through all this Media Elementary, Springton Lake, Penn Crest, Springton Lake is a problem. My niece is there now, she is in the 11th grade along a clan of her friends. The bottom line is that because adults are not comfortable following rules, they don't know the rules. Like the Springton Lake handbook, I probably know by hand. I had a kid who had an afro and they were throwing gum in his afro and the suggestion was that Sanu cut his hair. Not address what had actually happened to Sanu and how to mitigate all of that. So I've seen all kinds of things. And what I come, or kids asking for a nigger pass from my niece and all kinds of stuff like that, this is the issue. Because the staff, Mr. Saladino and the crew, they do not know the handbook. There are level offenses and one of the reasons why all the bullying and foolishness go on in school, I'm an educator, is because the adults are responsible and they are also bullies. That's just the bottom line. Wherever you have adults who do not keep people safe or are uncomfortable pressing the issue of following the rules that have been set in place, it is not easy. When you have a faction of adults, parents who are also bullies, who will come in, berate, tear down, mess up, cause all kinds of drama, just the whole of the people accountable or not be accountable when their kid is being jerky, that's really the issue. So, and then there are some things that culturally are none of your business. That would be one of them. That's not your business, it's not something to discuss and it's something that you need to consider because everybody at our school doesn't look like everybody else at our schools. I mean, even if we look and I say Di Marino and Saladino, I would assume that you guys are Italian, I could be incorrect. But I know in the 19th century, Italians were, at least Sicilians, southern Italians were considered the blackest of Italians. No jobs, no homes for you, no place to be safe. So here we are again at some foolishness. You are not following your own rules, it's embarrassing. Over 100 years and this is still going on and I'm not sure why you can't, it's trite and actually it's kind of lazy. When you make policy and procedure, you must research. This is what I did for the school district of Philadelphia, Baltimore City. As a real estate agent, as a nonprofit owner, you must do better. Because when she gets older, it's going to be a problem, you're getting ready to have such a bigger problem. It, it, it's.
Thank you very much.
So please, work it out, follow your own rules, do your own due diligence and hold your folks accountable. She should not have been acrossed by a teacher. That is the bully and therefore, there we go.
Our next speaker is June Morris. I know June Morris spoke before, I don't know if she signed up again, but June Morris? Okay. I believe that concludes all of our unscheduled presentations, I'm just checking to make sure there's nothing else, gentlemen from the back? Okay, thank you very much, that concludes our unscheduled presentations for the evening. All right, moving on, first we're moving on to old business. This is going to be a second read and vote, so excuse me, a second read and vote and that's policy 005 organization. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, I have, I would like to do number one, to accept the retirement of a classified employee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Sorry, I didn't catch it, do I have a second? Okay, discussion. I did want to extend some special thank yous and congratulations. He was an employee of us for 17 years, a very, very valued employee and bus driver and we do want to thank him for all of his years of service and dedication. I wish him nothing but the best with his retirement. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm going to suggest we put A2 through 17 in one vote, is there any objection to my doing so? Hearing none and seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next would be our overnight trip, the Penn Crest High School students to Ricketts Glen State Park. Sounds fabulous. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Other than I had my discussion too soon, but it does sound like a fabulous trip and I'm truly envious. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is a no vote, that is the 2022 through 2023 draft of the calendar, it's our first read and review. So again, we're not voting on this tonight, it's our first read and review. Next up, we have letter D, the health and safety plan revision. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Please go ahead, Ms. Schaefer.
Thank you. Um, so I, I think it's just important to acknowledge the work of the administration over the course of this pandemic. Thank you for continuing to be responsive as we learn more, not only about the pandemic, but about the student needs as a result. And I think thanks as well to the community members of all varying opinions on the matter for coming forward. It's a really important piece of our work and your engagement and this is very important, so thank you. I think, you know, for a very long time, we've had pretty strict adherence to CDC guidelines and for good reason. You know, they were the sort of first ones out of the gate, we didn't have much else to follow. Like the pandemic has evolved, evolved so has the guidance. And I think CHOP Policy Lab coming forward with some guidance that gives us a more nuanced approach to masking that not only allows us to continue to focus on the health and safety of students but meet their educational needs in a way that we maybe have not been able to over the course of the last two years. Gives us another tool to hang our hat on, so I do support the changes that have been put forward. I do have one question, which is related to how the district will handle a potential return to high community transmission. My understanding is that CDC and CHOP Policy Lab are in agreement about the importance of masking when rates are high and so my question is how we might handle that in the hopefully unlikely event that we return to that level of community transmission.
Yeah, we've, we've had some ongoing discussion about this. We meet every week together along with CHOP and Penn to kind of look at lots of different data, including international, national, local data. We do feel like everything is trending downward and that's what we're hopeful for. I think in the event that for some reason we return to high, that's going to be part of that ongoing discussion as well. We do we do, and I really appreciate it, I think of the input of CHOP in particular and Penn. And so I think at that point, those discussions would be about what's driving the high transmission and what's an appropriate way to respond and so you can leave that decision up to me, I'm happy to I say that now. But in the event that we return to high, I think out of my conversation with all of those local health experts, we can make a decision about what that means in terms of masking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Di Marino and Ms. Schaefer. I did want to go ahead and just make sure, I know we all have obviously read it, discussed it, but for the record, I would like to go ahead and read the resolution that is being proposed for today. Security, could somebody please shut the door, it's just a little bit hard for us all to hear and I'm suspecting as well for the people in the audience. Okay, so like I said, I just want to go ahead and read this for the record so that everyone is clear on it. So this is what is being proposed. Resolve that the Board approve a revision to Section A of the Health and Safety Plan to reflect the following, Section A is masking, of course. And that is beginning February 28th, 2022, masking while indoors for all students, staff and visitors will be optional and dependent on building level incidence rates remaining below 2% for that week. If the five-day incidence rate for a building reaches or exceeds the 2% threshold, students, staff and visitors will be required to mask for the following week. The district will monitor building level incidence rates each Friday to determine if or when to move from mask optional to mandatory masking indoors for all students, staff and visitors for the following week. And masking will be required on school buses because there is a federal order in effect. So it'll be in effect while that federal order remains in effect. So I did want to read that for the record that that is what is being proposed today. I also do want to clarify too, because I know there has been some confusion that all other, that is the only revision before the Board today. Everything else in the health and safety plan is not, there are no other revisions being proposed when it comes to contract tracing and whatnot, so that should be clarified. So that said, any other discussion?
Um, I agree with yeah. Ms. Schaefer spoke eloquently, all of my thoughts, as always, I appreciate that. And Dr. Di Marino, I support what you said about you're being the one to decide masking if we go to high transmission and I would like us to consider including that in the resolution. Making an amendment so that we can include language to that effect.
Yeah, I can try to pull that, let me try to read something that makes that make sense. If the community transmission level returns to high, superintendent in consultation with our local health experts and the school board, I would want to have a conversation with the Board. I don't think it has to be a formal vote, but I think certainly a conversation about what we're hearing from our health experts. Will determine if the district needs to return to universal masking. So I think that language is transparent in terms of how you respond to returning to high.
Can I make an amendment to include that language then in the resolution?
So for that to continue, do you want to make a motion to amend?
So I make an motion to amend the resolution as stated by Dr. Di Marino.
Exactly, now do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Or? A whole? All right, all in favor of incorporating that into the resolution? Pardon? Oh. No, we'll certainly go on, we will then go on to actually vote on the resolution, this is just to incorporate that language. So just to be clear, we've had a motion to incorporate that language, we've had a second to incorporate that language, opportunity for discussion to incorporate that language and yes. Dr. Di Marino, you have that written down?
Yeah. If the community transmission level returns to high, the superintendent in consultation with our local health experts and the school board will determine if the district needs to return to universal masking.
Okay, any other discussion about that language being incorporated into the resolution before us? All right, all in favor for incorporating that language into the resolution before us?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Does that discussion happen amongst a meeting like this or just amongst yourself in private?
Does that discussion happen amongst a meeting like this or just amongst yourself in private?
Are you referring to the, the discussion about whether we need to return to universal masking?
Yeah, so if you decide that we need to return to it, do you just have that in closed doors amongst yourself or is that going to happen in a, in a community meeting like this?
That, this language indicates that I'm going to make that decision as a superintendent.
But I thought you said, I thought it said you're making the decision with the discussion amongst the board and health and safety professionals.
You're right, so that decision would be out of our discussion really with the health experts that meet with us every week. And then I would be informing the board basically of saying what I'm hearing from our local health experts is that they're suggesting or recommending that we remove, we move back to universal masking because of whatever is going on that would be creating that spike.
Okay, so, so, so the community gets no say, gets no, they don't get heard at all?
I'm, I'm not sure if it's that you don't get heard. I think we have to, we have to make some decisions about how to respond as we continue to work through this.
I absolutely understand, I agree. Somebody has to make that decision, but why wouldn't it happen in a meeting like this?
Okay, so, so we're going. All right, we're going to have to continue with our legislative meeting. Again, for this particular meeting, it's not time for question and answer dialogue. So I just want to make sure that we're clear for the record, Mr. Kelly, just so you, you voted no, correct, sir? Okay. So make sure, okay, motion carries. So we now have that language incorporated now for the resolution as a whole before us. Which I read incorporating the language that we just voted on for Dr. Di Marino Bennett. So first, we've already had our motion, we've already had our second. So we're now on to discussion and I do believe Ms. Hunt is ready to discuss.
Can you hear me? Okay, so as a school board, I'm, I'm required to consider the impact of our policies on every student. We have an obligation to provide an education to all students. We provide special services to our most vulnerable learners. And I believe we need to provide a safe environment during a pandemic to our medically vulnerable learners, whether it is them personally or a family member. I don't believe we can leave them behind or leave them out. We have a health and safety plan that is based on the advice of leading medical professionals, epidemiologists, infectious disease specialists, pediatricians and virologists, people who trained for years and spent every day of their lives devoted to this field. CDC recommends universal indoor masking, physical distancing to the extent possible, and additional prevention strategies to prevent, protect students, teachers and staff. Schools should not exclude students from in-person learning to keep a minimum distance requirement. Layering multiple protection strategies is essential when physical distancing of at least three feet is not possible at all times. We have followed that guidance and relaxed distancing. CHOP has been considered one of the top pediatric medical facilities for decades. Continue, their recommendation is to continue indoor masking requirements within buildings and at school activities regardless of vaccination, vaccination status. Await reductions in case incidents and hospitalizations before introducing mask optional approaches. And we have followed that guidance. And while lately there has been some nuanced guidance from CHOP, there's that, that recommendation still stands very publicly on their website. Our policy is that once Delaware County is below a seven day average of 50, we will be mask optional. We are at 68 and are likely a week away from being at 50. This change to the health policy changes the definition of high transmission to a definition that is not universally accepted among leading health experts. And as such, I've seen a reason to change a medically based policy that protects every one of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Any other discussion? Ms. Fletcher?
I just, I appreciate what you said, Shelley. I think that like you, all of us take the health and welfare of our students. I, I, it's all we've thought about for two years. That there has been learning loss and other consequences over the past two years can't, can't be denied. And I think we were one of the more conservative districts all along. You know, at every step of the way, I think we acted incredibly cautiously. We had to listen to medical experts and we did that. But Dr. D is our education expert. And, and I know at times I defer to the medical community more often because I felt that burden for the community, just what you were talking about. But, but I do believe that we're still aligning ourselves very well with CHOP while allowing us to move into a more favorable model for learning and development that our kids need right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dennett?
Thank you, I want to thank everybody on the board for the thoughtfulness of our conversation here and the thoughtfulness of consideration over a couple of different board meetings and to everyone in the public whose thoughtfulness and passion is very clear and important for us to hear. I believe very strongly that the science is a moving target, viruses are moving targets. And we do have to learn from our experience. And I believe that everyone in the school district is capable of learning and has demonstrated that. I think there's a vaccine that is available, Omicron is not as risky as some of the other variants. As we've heard from some of our speakers, children can learn how to wear an N95 mask properly to protect themselves if that's the need for the community, for that family. And I was astounded to see the learning deficits that our younger children have demonstrated in the past couple of years. And I think it's time for that to end and for us to make up for that. I would urge the board and the administration to continue to monitor the virus level, any other variants of Omicron, of COVID, and to recognize that this is not the end, this is just the next chapter, whatever this vote is. And everybody in the district should, should take that to heart as well. So thank you, Dr. Di Marino, for your thoughtfulness on all of this and I would support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dennett. Other discussion? Ms. Lane?
Yes, thank you. I was very concerned about this proposal. I've been a real staunch advocate of following the guidance of the CDC, really everything that Shelley outlined and pointed out. But I also do hear the need for the students to get back to some normalcy and, and that there is a real challenge in education and social wellness. I, I do support this change with the caveat that as I'm sure there will be a tremendous amount of diligence and vigilance and keeping an eye on what comes next. I'm very heartened by the fact that so many districts around us went to this step a month or more ago and have not seen major problems, have not seen major spikes. So I'm very, very hopeful that this will work and, and thank you very much for everything you've done in this direction.
Thank you. Other discussion? The only thing I would note is that we thank everyone in the audience, as we rightfully should, for coming and speaking. I also do want to let people know that we received a number of emails and public comments submitted online. And obviously, the board and administration, we've read all of them. And they were varied, people were dedicated, passionate, all kinds of opinions. But we do sincerely appreciate everyone taking the time out to express their thoughts. Didn't want to be remiss in not acknowledging the online presence as well. It looks like we are out of discussion, so I'm going to go ahead and request that we do a roll call vote. Ken Dennett?
Aye.
Hillary Fletcher?
Yes.
Jackie Guzic? Shelley Hunt?
So.
Robert Kelly?
Yes.
Susan Lane?
Yes.
Shelley Schaefer?
Yes.
Teresa Nelson Williams?
Yes.
Susan Henderson Udis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Now, moving on to purchasing. So we have for number one, A, Bit Awards Indian Lane Elementary School Parking Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Sorry, second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, my apologies? Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, I'm going to suggest we group B 1 through 11 together in one motion. Is there any objection to my doing so? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let me, Mr. Dennett? All right, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, I'm going to suggest that we group C 1 and 2 together in one motion. Is there any objection to my doing so? All right, hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm going to suggest that we group letters D and E together in one motion. Is there any objection to my doing so? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we try that again? Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the addendum we have for human resources. I'm going to suggest that we group 1 through 3 together in one motion. Is there any objection to my doing so? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, Shelley, any opposed? Motion carries. And next we have finance on the addendum, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I did want to make just two quick announcements. Of course, our next board gathering, if you will, it will be our work session and that will be on March 10. And that will be live in person as all stream, livestreamed. And that's going to be at Springton Lake Middle School as always. And our next legislative meeting is going to be March 24th and that of course will be back here. Oh. Sorry, there's another event going on that will, March 24th, the next legislative will not be here. It will be at Springton, but it will be live and also livestreamed. So last but not least, we have adjournment. Do I have a motion to, do I have a motion to adjourn? So we have one move from Ms. Fletcher? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you all very much.